And I'm, I'm, I'm obviously the deputy mayor. I'm going to preside for the first minute of the meeting. I'd like to welcome those present and declare this meeting open at six oh one. The acknowledgement of country is that the City of Swan acknowledges the traditional custodians of this region, the Wadjak people of the Ngunghar nation, and their continuing connection to the land, waters and community. We pay our respects to the elders, past, present and their descendants. And the first item of business is for a motion to approve Mayor Richardson attending this special meeting of council electronically. So can I have someone to move the motion? I've councillor Ringo and seconded by, I always forget people's names, councillor Bowman. Thank you very much. Is anyone against? In that case, motion is carried. Over to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, everyone, and good evening. Welcome to all of the staff and councillors and those in the gallery. Thank you for coming along tonight to this special meeting of council. Just like to explain that the terms and conditions on the entry into this meeting are posted on the door as you enter. Please ensure that you have read them prior to attending this meeting and abide by them. Tonight's attendance and apologies, we have councillor Johnson, councillor Catalano, councillor Dawn, councillor Bowman, councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch, councillor Podovnik, councillor Henderson and councillors Anino, councillor Knight and councillor Miles in attendance, but we also have myself and councillor Singh and the CEO attending electronically. And we have a leave of absence for councillor Howlett. And tonight there are nil apologies. We move on to part four disclosures of interest. Are there any other councillors that need to submit a declaration of interest? If you are, if you do, there are forms underneath your desk. If you could please hand that up to Mr Bishop, that would be great. We move on to part five, public question time. So questions and answers are recorded in the minutes of the meeting and may be summarised in accordance with the Local Government Administration Regulations nineteen ninety six. And all questions will be published in the minutes of this meeting. At five point one, questions relating to reports contained in the agenda. Do we have any questions? No questions? We move on to five point one point one, questions of which due notice has been given. There were nil. And then five point one point two, questions without due notice. Is there any, any member of the public wishing to ask a question on an item in the agenda? Do you have anyone in the gallery there, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, yes, there is, Mr Andy Butler.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andy Butler. I'm here to complain about the constant drive bys of the City of Swan trucks, lunchtimes, afternoons.
Excuse me, excuse me, Deputy Mayor, I just need to let Mr Butler know that this is not general council, this is for, that's for a general council meeting, not tonight.
Oh, okay, yep.
Can I move the motion? He's here now, can we actually hear him speak?
No, this is a special meeting. No, I'm sorry, you can't move a procedural motion tonight.
Point of order, Madam Mayor, can we just clarify?
Just one moment.
Mr Butler's.
One moment, please, Deputy Mayor.
You just need to ask questions.
Deputy Mayor, could you please let me know what your point of order is, please? Can you tell me where I can find that, please?
Failing to follow the meeting procedure, basically the role of the presiding member is to explain to the public gallery what they need to do. So in this case, it's public questions and not public statement. So, Mr Butler, can I ask you just to ask a question? Thank you.
Just, just one moment, you need to be able to give me where I can find that, please, in the local meeting procedural law. Can you please give me the, the reference, please?
I think we've moved on, Madam Mayor.
No, I'm sorry, you called a point of order and I've asked you if you can point to which part of the local meeting.
As it's no longer needed.
It's withdrawing.
Thank you. Okay, so my apologies to Mr Butler, that is not able to happen tonight. So we need to move on, please, then to.
Point of order.
Are there any other questions in the gallery?
Yeah, point, point of order. We'll go through the point of order procedure then.
No, we've already moved on from that.
No, this is another point of order, Madam Mayor.
What is your point of order, Deputy Mayor?
So this is, the following are to be recognised as valid points of order, a breach of any written law, including this local law and the City of Swan Code of Conduct for Councillors and Committee members. So basically, in the, in the meeting procedures, local law and in the Local Government Act and in the administration regulations, there is a section for public questions and Mr Butler is here to ask questions. He's new to this process and he's not familiar with the fact that he must ask questions and not make a public statement. So that's my, my point of order.
Thank you. So at this stage, it is, it, it is irrelevant and thank you for finding that. So we're going to just have a look for a moment, thank you.
Madam Mayor, just, just.
Just one moment.
It's not irrelevant, it's the meeting procedures, local law and the local government.
If you could just give me one moment, please.
Madam Mayor, when you get a chance, I've got a question for you, please.
Thank you, councillor Bowman.
Specifically with a special council meeting, you can only relate to items related to items on the agenda.
Must relate to a matter concerning the local government.
Go back to, go back to matters contained in the agenda, what is, what is the purpose of the special council meeting? Now, these questions can only relate to matters contained in the special council meeting. Yeah, that's right, but they must relate to.
Right.
Me, dead.
Issues to be raised during public question, I must relate to a matter concerning
Thank you, I refer you to the Local Government Administration Regulations, Regulation seven, subregulation, subregulation four. Noting in subregulation three, that is a person wishing to ask a question, the meeting referred to has been given equal opportunity, under subregulation four B, at a council meeting to a question that does not relate to the purpose of the meeting. Purpose of this meeting is only to consider the issue of differential rates. Questions raised tonight can only be regarded in accordance with the Local Government Administration Regulations to matters pertaining to that question on the agenda, which is differential rates. He doesn't have a point of order.
So there is no point of order and we move on? So are there any other questions, the member of the public wishing to ask a question on an item in the agenda? No, we move on to deputations. We have Karen Moat on item nine point one point one, not in support of the officer's recommendation. Is Karen in the gallery? There we are. Hello, Karen. We have three minutes. Two minutes, two minutes, my apologies.
Two, I thought it was three.
It might be three.
It's three, sorry, I did say three, two, three.
Can I?
So three minutes, thank you.
Sorry, councillor, sorry, Mayor Richardson, can I ask for a copy of my deputation to be handed to councillors, partly due to my nerves and partly due to my beautiful Scottish accent? So I don't want you to hear anyone. Do you want me to start now?
Yes, thank you.
Mayor Richardson, councillor, CEO and City of Swan staff. My name is Karen Moat and I'm a resident and rate payer from Brigadoon. I'm here to speak against the officer's recommendation in respect of the only item on tonight's agenda. This recommendation does not provide any resolution for ratepayers currently affected by the rural rating inequity, which places a substantial financial burden on some. Councillors, I'm sure you'll have read the officer's report to council tonight, but I think it's time I stood in front of this council and asked you to hear from someone directly impacted by this issue. The current rural rating inequity is very simple. It's where properties of the same land size, the same land use, the same land zoning and which have the same services provided by the city as their rural neighbours, but are rated differently to the rural neighbours. If you were a rural resident, would you be happy to be paying over a thousand dollars more than rates simply because your property is classified as GRV residential rather than UV rural, taking into consideration that your neighbours are UV rural? The difference between me paying GRV residential and UV rates last year would have been one thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and five cents. And I'm going to repeat that figure again to ensure that you understand the financial burden that the current rating rural, sorry, the current rural rating inequity is making, one thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and five cents. This is over an eighty-five percent increase in rates. My property is rural for everything that the city controls other than rates. It's rural for planning, building, fencing, sheds, clearing of native vegetation, revegetation, fire breaks and the list goes on. My property is zoned special rural in the city's local planning scheme. It's zoned rural in the metropolitan region scheme. My land is rural. I'm permitted to build on up to ten percent of my rural land. So what's the purpose or use of the remaining ninety percent of my rural land? It simply has to be maintained as rural land. I am simply the guardian or custodian of the rural land. Isn't protecting, conserving, preserving the rural land a rural purpose? Councillors, the financial burden being placed on a few low, few rural ratepayers deserves your attention. This is not small change for us. I would remind you that very recently this council decided against introducing a vacant land rating category, which could have seen a thirty percent increase for vacant land. The current rural rating inequity has imposed an eighty-five percent increase on my own rates. Do you care about this? Rural ratepayers who are currently impacted are simply requesting that they're rated on the same basis as the rural neighbours. Rated in a fair and equitable manner, rated in a transparent manner, rated in a consistent manner. Am I not the same as my rural neighbours?
Councillors, are there any que-
Yeah, I've got a question, Miss Moat. Have you got more to say?
No, that was it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We move on to part nine, reports. Nine point one point one is the differential rating for two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five. When I ask for a motion to move the officer's recommendation.
Councillor Henderson.
Thank you, councillor Henderson. Can I ask for a second, eh?
Councillor Jones.
Councillor Jones has raised her hand.
You're muted, Mayor.
Councillor Henderson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, councillors. Was there anyone against the motion? I think there was one, yes. Councillors, we've been through a lengthy process to, to get to this point. Quite clearly, the recommendation of three and a half percent increase is, if you compare to other councils, if you look at the, the costs that are associated with running the city is, is quite, is quite low. We've, we've got others that are up around as much as fifteen percent cumulative over the last four odd years and ours is down around the eight percent over that, that period of time. One of the things we have a responsibility to do is to be able to pay for the increased costs so that we can maintain our, our services. And I, I think perhaps we should discuss those costs. One of the biggest ones is what the state government passes on to us. State government have hit us pretty hard with the increased electricity costs, increased water, all, all of the utility charges have gone up significantly, particularly in the last four years. And so the state government are effectively passing taxes on to you, the ratepayers, by, by doing that, by those, by us having to pay for those to, to provide the services for the city. So given those increased costs and we have been very, very careful about the management of our staff levels, we have worked very hard to, to look at how we reduce our costs. By the way, I don't see a timer running. But I, I, I think that the key thing here is that we have spent a lot of time going through numerous sessions to, to look at where we can cut our costs, where we can reduce our overheads. Yet, people say to me, have been ringing me and saying, you haven't been able to, to do our verges. Our verges are overgrown. People have been saying to me that they want a swimming pool built in Ellenbrook. And by the way, to those that are listening, we are going to have to pay you, the ratepayers, going to have to pay a significant amount of money towards that pool. Whilst there is a good federal government support from previous government, the state really does need to, to do some heavy lifting in my mind to help us out with that, because we do have a big cost ahead to do that. So overall, we, we have a lot of headwinds on our costs and if we don't, if we don't do our, our work effectively, we're going to find ourselves struggling and, and by that I mean a three and a half percent increase is.
Thank you, councillor Henderson, that was your three minutes.
Quite low and I urge your support.
Councillor Jones, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Henderson has mentioned pretty much everything I was going to say, but I'd just like to add, three and a half percent is a very responsible decision for us to make to ensure the future success of the City of Swan. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Would anyone like to speak against the motion?
Yes, I would like.
Councillor Catalano.
Thank you. Getting a bit of feedback here. Okay, I don't support three point five percent increase. Everything's going up, inflation's still on its way up and we've got some very expensive items in this budget upon which this three point five percent increase in the rate in the dollar is based. And a lot of these expensive items, in my view, should be taken right out of the budget. And I, I did ask right back in the twenty-second of April for this to happen and of course nothing has changed. And those contentious items include two point five million dollars on Midland Oval, roads on Midland Oval, spending on administration centre in Midland, when really it's time to start thinking about administration centres and, and those kind of buildings in Ellenbrook, where all the people are going to be in the future. Also, the contentious project in Balladura, at least half the people there were against the play space being located at that particular location. I went through all the submissions myself and read them. And there's quite a few others, there's eighty thousand dollars on the Rav Road, that's the articulated industrial kind of type of vehicle road in, in Hazelmead that the community doesn't want, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars on Midland, on Morrison Road upgrade. I mean, it, there's a huge list and I asked for, if these, well, it might, when I went through it and, and slashed these out of the budget, there was no need for any rate increase. In fact, there were savings to be had and we could put that money to what people want, which is their suburbs upgraded, their verges kept up and beautification of their suburbs, which are in sore need, especially if you look around the Alton Ward suburbs and, and Midland suburbs, there, there's, we've been waiting for some money to be spent on these suburbs for years and that was reflected, in fact, in the survey, in the customer survey. So, no, it's not responsible and actually it's not even right. We need to hold off on the big spending on contentious items, put them on the back burner until all the community is right behind them. They're very expensive projects and we need to go back to keeping the rates as they are. We need to look at savings that we have on spending on what people actually want and, and basically having a mind to just how difficult it is for ratepayers out there with the cost of living rises, with, with the mortgage increases. I mean, we just do not want to see these young families, particularly in our new suburbs, you know, with their backs against a wall like this. So no one can support it.
That's your three minutes. Can I ask, does anyone like to speak for the motion? Anyone against the motion?
Madam Mayor, I have some questions.
Councillor Bowman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to the CEO or to Mr Bishop, councillor Catalano talked about a number of projects she raised and I have the list in front of me of twelve point seven million dollars. If I was to ask about the three biggest items on there, which were about nine million dollars, so seventy-five percent, can the CEO advise me, is that a budget saving? So those three are Henley Brook Avenue, councillor Catalano had four million and five thousand. My understanding was that this is funded by a three million dollar grant fund. So would that be a four point zero zero five million dollar savings to municipal expenditure? The next one is the Balladura Intergenerational Play Place. Councillor Catalano on her list had it at three point oh three four million. My understanding is there's two million dollar Lottery West grant funding. Would there be a three point oh three four million dollar saving to municipal funding? The other third biggest one is Midland Oval Roads and Planning. My understanding is a lot of that is coming out of reserves. Would there be a two point two million dollar saving in municipal funding or expenditure for that one?
Thank you very much, councillor Bowman. Through you, Mr CEO.
Thank you. And councillor Bowman and to councillors, where we have funds and the executive director of corporate seps can provide a more detailed breakdown, where we have funds derived by grants or by transfers from reserve, they're not feeding directly into the city's rate increase. So deleting these projects will not obviate the issue on, on rate increases. If you'd like a specific breakdown on any of these projects, Madam Mayor, I'd suggest Mr Drabas can provide further answers.
Thank you, councillor Bowman, do you, do you require further breakdown of that?
No, I'm fine, Madam Mayor, the CEO's answered my question.
Thank you. I'll ask again, is there anyone who'd like to speak for the motion? Anyone against the motion? There's no one else to speak.
Ringo has just put her hand up to speak for the motion.
Councillor Ringo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um councillors, I think we've all heard um what has already been spoken, but I just wanted to add a few stuff. I know that uh councillor Catalano spoke about an email that she had sent out um in April and we've all received that email. Um I just want to say, you cannot cut capital works that have already contracts, have already been signed, that already have grants to them or they're from the reserve, reserves. That's not looking for real cost savings, to be honest. Um yes, there's cost of living. Um the things that Catalana have, uh sorry, councillor Catalana have listed, my apologies, uh you know, that apparently residents do need. I then asked the question, councillors and um and for anyone listening, what services are you willing to cut to have a zero rate rise? I recently spoke to many residents um who are in support of a rate rise, actually. And I will uh gladly read out um a lovely um message I actually got from a couple of residents. I totally agree. So this is from Virginia who lives in my ward, in Piers Ward. I totally agree for a rate rise because as residents of Ellenbrook, we are expecting green suburbs, safe suburbs, and rates have to increase if we want services in our area. Yes, there is a cost of living crisis, but we cannot have a deficit in services when it's needed the most. And for me as a Piers Ward councillor, I think that speaks volume. Um and this will be the reason why I am supporting the officer's recommendation.
Thank you very much, councillor Ringo. I'll ask, is there anyone against the motion? There's no one against the motion. I'll ask the mover for a right of reply.
I wasn't sure if anyone else wanted to speak. Um thank you, Madam Mayor. Um firstly, um I'm, I'm really confused about the debate I heard from councillor Catalano. On one hand, uh she's saying that we should be cutting expenditure. On the other hand, she's saying we should be expending uh money on areas that are in need. Well, there's a, a classic federal government debate about a magic pudding. Um and you can't have one without the other. And the point is, we've already gone through all of the projects that we're going to agree to, to fund. We've uh, we've had an extensive exercise to, to cover that. So frankly, um you, you can't uh, you can't uh talk about one thing without the other. And councillor Bowman uh very clearly noted that uh part and parcel of, of that um thinking has already been discounted. So councillors, uh we, we've got a um uh a, a point here too about um rate increases. Some of us might panic about elections and things like that. And uh councillor Ringo talked about people saying that a, a rate rise is a good thing. Well, I voted for a rate rise last year. Um and um I then stood for reelection and got my best ever vote. People said to me, yes, I understand that you have to increase rates. Why do you have to increase rates? Because costs go up and the city is growing and they expect services. So as much as I hate it, we all hate it. We all hate, actually, it's one, it's not the increase that we hate, I think it's the rates that we hate. And that's a, that's a fundamental, uh three tiers of government and taxes, I get all that. So councillors, I think um what we have is responsible. Um and uh thank you, councillor Jones, in respect of that, it is responsible. Um and uh our, our ratepayers expect us to do that and they expect to keep the city at the high level of standard that it is today. It could be better, yeah, we could increase rates to six, seven or eight percent and do a lot more. But I think we do need, in these difficult times, to be, to be tough. So councillors, please support this uh, this motion to uh uh as uh recommended in the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Henderson. Then we'll put the motion to the vote. Those in favour?
Mister Bishop to read the names, eh?
Madam Mayor, I have councillor McCullough, councillor Jones, councillor Bowman, councillor Ringo, councillor Budovnik, councillor Henderson, councillor Zanino and councillor Miles.
And myself.
And of course, yourself, Madam Mayor.
And those against?
Those against, Madam Mayor, I have the deputy um deputy mayor, um Johnson, councillor Catalano, uh councillor Dawn and councillor Knight and councillor Singh. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion is passed.
Nine, five.
Nine, five. Thank you very much. The councillors, that brings us to the end of this uh meeting.
Madam Mayor, you, sorry, you need to declare that motion.
Sorry, could you hear that?
You, you need to declare it. It was carried, I think.
Sorry, could you hear me? So that's declared nine, five, carried.
Yes, thank you, I've got that in.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank everyone for coming in, those in the gallery, and uh I wish you a good night and thank you very much. And we declare this meeting closed now at six thirty-two PM.